Your name and your address, and you'll have five minutes. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Ian Rowe. I'm actually calling you from New York. And my testimony is in response to Resolution Number 20. And I respectfully submit my comments. I'm currently a Senior Visiting Fellow at the Woodson Center, an organization that was founded by Bob Woodson in 1981. For nearly 40 years, the Woodson Center has empowered thousands of local leaders across the country to transform the lives of people living within those communities. In Ohio, we've worked with Reverend Willie Peterson in Youngstown, Reverend Gary White at Akron, and Bishop Marva Mitchell in Dayton. And most importantly, for the last 10 years, I led a nonprofit network of public charter elementary and middle schools in the heart of the South Bronx and the Lower East Side of Manhattan. We had more than 2,000 students, primarily low-income Black and Hispanic kids, whose parents chose our schools because they wanted their children to develop the skills in life to become agents of their own uplift. And similar to parents, I'm sure, throughout Ohio, many of our parents in low-income communities may have faced racial discrimination in their own lives. But they knew that a great school could make a huge difference. They knew that America has a terrible legacy of slavery. But they also know that America faces, even with that legacy of slavery, there is also a simultaneous legacy of excellence and resilience in the face of slavery. And it's very important that our schools are armed with curricula that tells that complete story. Not just the stories of oppression, but the stories of triumph over that oppression. And what the characteristics were that African-Americans of past and present evidenced in actually embracing founding ideals of our country, like family, faith, free enterprise, hard work, entrepreneurship, as the tools to move from persecution through prosperity. This is very important right now, as we, as a country, and in Ohio, are having conversations about race and racial disparities. And I just wanted to comment on the resolution, which seems to really want to take a step towards reflection on racial disparities. But it's important that whatever curricula you adopt, reflect and celebrate the founding ideals. We know that the New York Times 1619 Project claims that, quote, "our democracy's founding ideals were false when they were written," and that, quote, "anti-Black racism runs in the very DNA of the country," unquote. As an educator, particularly of students in low-income communities, primarily students of color, I know how damaging and disempowering that kind of message can be. And I wanted to make sure that you were familiar with a new curriculum that was just announced last week, the 1776 Unites Curriculum, which is developed by the folks at the Woodson Center. A group of Black scholars, community activists, local leaders, came together and said, "Can we create a compelling alternative that doesn't turn away from the stories of race and racial oppression, but actually tells that story and the incredible stories of those African-Americans, past and present, who overcame that racism?" Those stories are very important to complete a full picture of what the experience has been in the United States. And so, our curriculum, which is freely available, it's at 1776unites.com. It's free to anyone, has stories of African-American figures like Biddy Mason, an amazing woman who was born a slave and died a millionaire and became a great philanthropist. Or Elijah McCoy, the child of escaped slaves, who ultimately became an engineer and developed nearly 60 patents and developed products that were so superior, created all of these knockoffs. And when engineers went to buy his products and they saw the knockoffs, they said, "No, no, no, I want the real McCoy." Most Americans know that phrase, but aren't familiar with the fact that it's associated with an African-American inventor. These are just some of the--
Mr. Rowe, I want to let you know you have 15 seconds.
Okay, thank you. These are just some of the stories in 1776 Unites. This is ultimately going to be a K-12 curriculum. And I encourage you, as you think about how to address racial disparities, ensure that the curricula tells a complete and authentic story of how African-Americans, past and present, overcame the legacy of slavery that's just as important as the stories of oppression. Triumph over adversity, that's part of the American story.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you being here. Just as a point of clarification, so that you know, the State Board of Education does not have the authority or the responsibility to adopt curriculum. We are what's called a local control state. So we have 613-some school districts, and they all make their own decision about how to teach with the state standards. The 1619 Project is one resource that it happens to be listed under the Social Studies Resources for teachers. But it sounds to me like the 1776 Unites Curriculum should also be listed as one of those resources. So, as a point of presidential prerogative, I'm going to ask our staff to take a look at that and make certain that that is also once added to our list of available resources for teachers.
Thank you for that consideration.
Certainly. I believe Ms. Dodd has a question.
Madam President, I was just going to say what you just said. There seems to be an awful lot of misinformation that's out there based on the emails that I know that I have received about what it is we are or are not adopting. So, just to echo what you said, I put in the chat, I don't know if everybody can see it, but early on in my time on the State Board, we actually passed a resolution very clearly stating that the State Board of Education does not adopt curriculum or educational materials, and that that is a local decision. So, I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that and that it's stated in public. Mr. Rowe, thank you so much for your testimony and for making us aware of this additional and new information. So, thank you.
No, thank you. And it does send a signal when the state does choose to put materials on the state website. So I think by expanding your view to include 1776 Unites, it at least empowers local jurisdictions to have more choice in what they do ultimately choose to implement within their schools. Thank you very much.
Thank you for that statement, and I personally couldn't agree more. I think that is the whole name of the game here. We do have a couple of questions. We have Board Member Hill, Board Member Kilgore, and Board Member McGuire. So let's start with Ms. Hill. And Mr. Hagan will be after Ms. McGuire.
I'm going to turn my video off, just so it doesn't interrupt the audio. Hopefully, it'll be smooth. I wanted to ask about your experience, Mr. Rowe, in your work in New York City. If you could describe a little bit about sort of your approach on the topic of social studies in history and what you used in the school there.
Oh, thank you for the question. Well, the population of schools within our network is about 2,000 students, primarily low-income Black and Hispanic students, who you might imagine are inundated with stories about structural racism and structural barriers. And a lot of the contemporary dialogue of white supremacy runs in the DNA of the country. The very last thing we want our kids to believe is that they live in a country that is committed to their destruction. And that is our concern when we hear a lot of the narrative around the 1619 Project, or a lot of the other discussion that you're hearing currently around the dominance of white supremacy, without letting young people of all races know that they have the power to achieve a better life and that there are founding ideals of our country. Strong families, free enterprise, faith, hard work, entrepreneurship, seeking out your own enterprise. These are very real aspects of the American story, accessible to everyone, accessible to all kids of every race. So when we think about history, we want to tell a complete and authentic story. Not only about America's terrible history of oppression, but also the stories of resilience and excellence in the face of that oppression. So that's our approach, and we think it's very, very important to not promote resources that have a very skewed and negative vision of American history.
Thank you. Ms. McGuire.
I want to thank Mr. Rowe for his presentation. You actually told my story. I call it a story of tenacity. I grew up as the colored girl in segregated South, educated in a segregated school system during the Jim Crow era. I had a dog sicced on me. So when I said my story of tenacity, my family made a difference. The encouragement from educators in a segregated school system, along with my parents, say I could do anything I wanted to do, regardless of the color of my skin. So you're telling my story. I think it's good that, and Laura, I would recommend that, while it is a local decision, local control, as Ms. Dodd pointed out, we do vet curriculums to appear on our website as model curricula to meet the state standards. So, I would recommend that we at least refer them to the proper staff for the vetting process, even though, here again, when they appear on our website, whether we like it or not, we're making a statement that this is good for educating our students. And I believe they do need a well-rounded truth about the founding principles and true to our strategic plan, that it should be aspirational, that they can achieve, that we do support equity partnerships and quality schools for all students for their success. So I like to recommend that the, I think it's called 1776 Unites Curriculum--
Yes.
--be vetted. And I think the staff person is Ms. Bircham, as I recall, to be included as a resource on our website. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGuire.
Thank you for that. And it is exciting to note that the 1776 Unites Curriculum is ultimately going to grow into a K-12 curriculum, so accessible at every grade. And honestly, the way we've designed it, we want it to be wherever character formation is happening of children. So that could be in schools, after-school, community-based organizations, parents. It's freely accessible to everyone. And last week, we introduced just the first installment at the high school level, but know that it will continue to grow over the next few months into a fully-fledged-out K-12 curriculum.
Perfect. Mr. Hagan, did you wish to ask a question?
Yeah, just a comment, actually. I wanted to thank Mr. Rowe for his input here. And those that have worked on that project, I'm impressed. I want to thank Laura for taking this to the department to get it included. But I also want to comment that, as I have in the past, that I continue to be troubled by not being able to get an answer to the question from the department of how things end up on the website. And it seems to be a dead end on that question every time. Things end up there, and no one seems to be responsible. And I think that certainly applies to some of the things that we're talking about here today. I commend Charlotte for her suggestion that we vet this particular curriculum through committee and then see about getting it posted. So that's my full concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hagan. Ms. Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Rowe. Actually, Mr. Hagan asked my question. So I think, but since I have a moment, I just want to thank you so much. I think that it's so important that our kids know right from the start how important they are and that they are indeed, you know, in a world that does, you know, we're all God's creations. And it made me sad to think that we would try to tell kids at a young age that they were victims or things that would spark negative emotions like fear and the different things of being a victim. I'm not doing very good at this. Sorry, guys. But to tell that story in such a way that gives people hope, appreciation, I think Ohio has incredible history here as being a non-racist state. We had some of the most famous abolitionists from this area. The Underground Railroad is an incredible story. And these are the things that we could truly celebrate. We should celebrate the amazing things that we have done here in history, and especially Ohio history. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, thank you for that comment. Many of your board members may be familiar with the concept of grit, which is the relentless perseverance towards a goal. But the thing is, young people don't exercise grit unless they first have a belief that their effort matters. That's what we call agency, the self-belief that you can help determine your own outcomes. Part of the way that you help develop a sense of self-belief and agency for young kids in tough situations is that they learn from the success stories of others who have also faced extraordinary success. And that's, again, why we really believe it's so important to tell a complete story. America has a mixed history around the legacy of slavery, there's no doubt. But there's also a legacy of Black excellence and resilience in the face of slavery. That's how we help our young people build that sense of agency and that sense of grit that then follows, so that when they do confront challenges, they will have more confidence and the ability to overcome those challenges.
Thank you very much. I'm going to ask Ms. Fowler-Arthur to speak next. And again, I'll ask board members to keep their remarks succinct. We have a lot of people who would like to speak to us.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Rowe, for your comments and perspective. It was definitely something I had not heard of before in the 1776 Project, I think is what you called it. But when you were answering one of the other questions, you used the phrase, I believe, that this would address structural racism. And I was wondering if you could elaborate on how the curriculum or the project or how you see it addressing that, because I didn't quite make the connection in the comment.
No, it's a very good question. And the comment that I made is that for a lot of the young students in our schools in the heart of the South Bronx and the Lower East Side of Manhattan, I'm sure, similar to many young people in Cleveland or Dayton, they are hearing almost every day about structural racism and the systemic barriers that are keeping their people down and that white supremacy runs in the DNA of the country. Those kinds of messages are very disempowering, very debilitating. And what we want to make sure is that young people don't grow up believing that their country is, again, committed to their destruction. And so, the key is, how do we help build within young people a knowledge of the assets that they do have, the principles that they can embrace, the principles that this country was founded on? It's idea of hard work, faith, family, entrepreneurship, free enterprise. These are tools that exist for everyone. Every young person can embrace them. The last thing we want to do is convince a young person that they can't succeed because of structural racism. Many of us are committed to challenging structural racism, for sure. But when it comes to our kids' education, we want to know that they still, we want them to know that they still have power. So that's the linkage that we continuously try to make. And the beauty of the American story is that there are hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of examples of African-Americans, people of all races, who face enormous adversity and still overcome. And by studying that success, we hope we can inspire young people to find their own strategies for success in their own lives.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. You are a very effective advocate for your ideas. And we have three more board members who wish to ask a question, and then we are going to move on. So, the three board members I have are Mr. Dakin. Ms. Kilgore would like to circle back, and we will end with Ms. Haycock. So, Mr. Dakin.
Thank you, President Kohler, and thank you, Mr. Rowe, for taking time to be with us this afternoon. You are indeed impressive. Did I understand it correctly, that you run a school in New York or a series of schools in New York?
Yeah, for the last decade, for the last 10 years, I was CEO of Public Prep, which is a nonprofit network of public charter elementary and middle schools. There are about 2,000 children in our schools, again, primarily low-income Black and Hispanic. At the end of June, at the end of my 10 years, I actually handed the reins off to my superintendent, who's actually now running the network. And I'm actually now in the midst of designing a new network of high schools, of character-based international bakery at high schools, also to open in the Bronx. Because, like in many places across the country, even with a strong elementary and middle school education, there aren't enough high-quality high schools. And so that's something that I'm now launching in the Bronx.
Just a follow-up, just a real quick follow-up. Have you considered expanding to other states?
We have, and I actually work with a number of leaders in other states. And so, it is something that we are considering, yes.
Great. Perhaps Ohio could be in your consideration.
Yes, okay.
Thank you. Ms. Kilgore?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Rowe, I really appreciate the fact that you're here, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you. And Mr. Dakin, I'm going to suggest Cincinnati should be the site of the first Ohio school. I'm from southwest Ohio. And I just really want to, I made the connection of the thing that you said so eloquently. I really appreciate everything that you said. But also, our board has spent much time on social emotional learning. And your point about children incorporating, internalizing the hope of opportunity is such an important statement, and I am so thankful that you made that point. Again, thank you very much. Mr. Rowe?
Thank you. I mean, children, we are adults. We know that, many of us know the struggles that our kids are going to face. But we also know the pathways of those who were able to overcome those challenges. Let's not hide that from our kids.
Right.
There are millions of stories that exist. And I think of all of us in good faith can think about those kinds of people, those kinds of experiences, incorporate that into a curriculum, honor where our kids are coming from, but let them know they're not defined by where they started. That's the promise of our country, and that's what we're hoping to accomplish within the 1776 Unites Curriculum.
Thank you very much. And one last question from Board Member Haycock.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I first want to apologize. I've been having internet issues all day, so I'm going to leave my video down, just so I can make sure that the audio is up. Thank you so much for coming in, Mr. Rowe. I really appreciate what your effort in giving kids hope. I wondered if you could, and bringing attention to the board, your potential curriculum that could be maybe listed on our site as something that school districts could incorporate. Once again, the State Board does not prescribe any type of curriculum. But I wondered if you could just quickly address how 1776 Curriculum addresses redlining and the banking laws that restricted banking to people of color and maybe the Tulsa massacre. I went through school, and I had never heard of any of these things. And so, how do you, first of all, how do you address that? And then, how do you address the reality of this? And then, do you tell kids to have a blind hope that they're not going to face these challenges? Or, I certainly think that all people of any color, of any gender, are all children of God and have value. And so, how do you bridge that gap, saying, "This is the reality, but you can do this too"? So talk to how it addresses redlining, restricted banking, and massacres, and then, how do you balance the hope message?
Yeah, it's a fantastic question, because there's no doubt there are very real stories of the American past where there were intentional efforts, often brutal efforts, to restrict the opportunities for Black Americans. It is true. And so whether it's redlining or restrictions on financial access, those stories are true, and we will be telling that part of the story. But we think it's actually irresponsible to narrowly focus on that part of the story to create the impression that there weren't any stories of victory then, or frankly, even today. You know, when you think about financial access, there's a lot of discussion around the fact that, for example, there is about a 10-to-1 relationship when you take the average net worth of the average white family in the United States, compare that to the average Black family. It's a 10-to-1 relationship. And some use that as evidence of the legacy of oppression in the United States and the permanent racial handicap of Black people. But when you take into account one other factor, such as family structure, the actual racial wealth gap is reversed in that the average wealth of the average married, two-parent household Black family is nearly twice that of the average white parent, single-parent household. So what that says is, perhaps there are factors beyond just race that determine what the economic outcome can be for a child today. So yes, redlining did exist, and we need to make sure kids understand the legacy of that. But the access to financial capital is very different today. For example, in New York, there's an organization called Harlem Capital, which is investing, has committed to, quote, "change the face of entrepreneurship." They're going to be investing in 1,000 minority and women-led new businesses, and they're investing in those today. There's an entrepreneur, Richelieu Dennis, who just created a $100-million fund for African-American female entrepreneurs. So when you say, "How do we tell the story?", we definitely tell the story of redlining, Black Wall Street, all the challenges. But we also let our young people know that America is not defined solely by the negative stories of the past. There is incredible opportunity for young kids of color today. In our own schools, we made it clear to our kids, there are more than 100 of the finest colleges and colleges and universities in the country that will offer a world-class education absolutely free. education absolutely free. Princeton University, Rice, I'm sure there are universities in Ohio, as long as our kids are prepared. Our attitude is let kids know the history, but also let them know of the enormous opportunities that exist before them, but they've got to be prepared. And we have to make sure our schools let them know that they have the ability to be prepared and capitalize on these opportunities. So Ms. Haycock, it's a great question. You can't dodge the history of the country, but today's reality is that there's enormous opportunity, and we have to let young people know about their ability to seize that opportunity.
Can I just have one follow-up? Mr. Rowe, you mentioned, I just want to collect some data. Could you send me some data? You mentioned the, the, the wealth, you know, because I, I've heard the data about white families and Black families, Black families, it's a tenth of what, you mentioned, you started dissecting it, you know, a little, a little bit deeper down. Can you send me that information? I'd like to compare what a single, single white family, single Black family, whatever.
Yeah, I can send that to you right after this call. We just did a research study on it, because, and this is actually a good example of, of why it's so important to let young people know about opportunities, because in this particular case, the author of the sixteen nineteen project, Nikole Hannah-Jones, says that the racial wealth gap is so big that it doesn't matter if you get married, doesn't matter if you buy a home, doesn't matter if you save, doesn't matter if you're, you get an education. There's nothing you can do as an individual to overcome the racial wealth gap. This is literally what she wrote just a few weeks ago to justify reparations, trillions of dollars of government money that would go to descendants of Black slaves. And the message is that you, as an individual Black person, there's nothing you can do, quote, "it's the most debilitating and demeaning message." And then again, once you take into account family structure, you see that the whole relationship is reversed. And so what it indicates is that we should have a message of empowerment. There are factors within the control of our young people, such as their ability, their decisions around education, their work, timing of family formation. These things matter significantly in the ability to generate wealth within your own generation, and thus the ability to transfer wealth across generations. I can, I can send you that article right after, if you give me your email address, I can send it to the entire board. It's well worth reading, because it's a good example of why we need empowering message for young people, not to convince them that they're powerless in the face of historical challenges.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rowe, for, for being here with us today. I'm going to ask that our board liaison, Alex Goodman, send you an email right away so that you have Alex's contact information, and then I'm going to ask Alex to share whatever you're able to send with all board members. Okay?
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Certainly. I am going to circle back, and I noticed that Mr. John Adams has been with us for a while. Mr. Adams, I'm going to invite you to speak next, and the way we work around here is if you would just please give us your name and your address, and then you'll have five minutes.